Good evening. Welcome to the City of West Miami. Today is October the 21st, 2015. For the invocation, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you. Please rise. Let's bow our head this evening and thank the Lord for our daily and many blessings, those that we see and those that we don't. Tonight, Lord, we feel your presence in this chamber with the distinguished public servants whom we embrace this evening and thank them for what they do and everything that they do for our community. We pray for those that are ill, frail, and lonely so that they may find comfort in their lives. We ask for you to keep our military personnel safe, our law enforcement, family, and our firefighters out of harm's way so that they can return home to their families and return to do what they do best, to serve the public. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Chief, for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Present.
Mayor Eduardo Muina.
Present.
All present. Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. Item four, please.
Item four is the presentation of minutes for approval for September 23rd, 2015, special city commission meeting, and Commissioner Suarez abstains.
Make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Present. Presentation of minutes for approval for October 7th, 2015, regular city commission meeting. Mayor Muina and Commissioner Rodriguez abstain.
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I would like to take an item out of order, and that will be item 11A.
Mr. Mayor, under new business agenda item 11, 11A, presentation of proclamation to Miami-Dade County Fire Chief Dave Downey for his selection as the Fire Chief of the Year 2015.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Actually, this is a tremendous honor, and this is something that I think our vice mayor, former firefighter, should be part of this presentation. Who better than our vice mayor to recognize the chief? So...
Thank you.
And before we do that, I would like to recognize from the office of Rebecca Sosa, we have Jose Daniel here tonight, representing Miami-Dade County, District 6. With that, can we come forward to... Anything else?
Detras.
No? Am I forgetting anything?
No, sir.
I've seen some looks.
No, sir.
I always bow to my city manager. She always give me a key. Madam Clerk? Okay.
Entrega se la juan. Ya se las loma.
It gives me a great honor to present this proclamation to the chief. This kind of recognition does not come easy. To make Fire Chief of the Year is a big deal. Among so many great fire departments throughout our land, it just doesn't come very easy. There's a great deal of organizing, planning, staffing, directing, and ultimately making the right decisions to control and get the effect that you want. There is a great number of fire stations and units and men that he oversees, and I tell you, and then having to deal with the county commission to get the money for the fire department budget, that in itself, it's incredible. So being able to perform that feat and then doing everything else that I just mentioned deserves a great recognition, and I happen to know how hard it is. So we didn't hesitate when we found out that we were going to be Chief of the Year, and we all unanimously, you know, decided we want to give this proclamation. I guess I should read it.
Vice Mayor, if you would maybe step a little bit closer so that the record can pick up the proclamation.
Okay. Proclamation to Chief Downey. Whereas Miami-Dade Fire Chief Dave Downey began his distinguished career in the fire services over 30 years ago with Miami-Dade Fire Rescue, where he, with discipline, determination, and distinction, worked his way up the ranks from firefighter to becoming fire chief. And whereas Fire Chief Dave Downey was named 2015 Fire Chief of the Year by the Florida Fire Chiefs Association, and whereas this award is the most important honor the Florida Fire Service can bestow on one of its own fire chiefs in recognition of leadership, innovation, professional development, integrity, service to the public, saving lives, protecting property, and numerous contributions to the fire service as a whole. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Mayor Eduardo Muina, and Vice Mayor Juan Blanes, Commissioners Candida Blanca, Ronda Rodriguez, and Luciano Suarez hereby recognize Chief Fire Chief Dave Downey, Miami-Dade Fire Rescue Department, for your outstanding work, dedication, and professionalism for raising the bar in the fire rescue field, and for your selection as the 2015 Florida Fire Chief of the Year. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Speech, Chief.
Speech. I guess I gotta be on the right. Well, again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, manager, it's quite an honor. I'm humbled by this. When I received the presentation at the Florida State Meetings, I'm sitting in the audience saying, "Well, I should know that guy." When they're reading the stuff, I didn't really know it was me, and this was quite a surprise. And I'm especially honored to have my brothers here from your Station 40 and Station 14 along with the chief, as well as the two conspirators over there from our department, Maria Reyes and my Chief of Staff, Andy Alvarez. So again, thank you. Thank you so much for your daily support of Miami-Dade Fire Rescue. We love being your provider. I love being your fire chief, and thank you very much.
Hold up, guys. Let's get a group picture. We can all...
Where? Colgado. Oh, the radio and the... The Jose Palomayo statistics. Go, Maria, go to the front. You're gonna... Yes. Go, go, go. This goes on our website, so put on your best smile and on our Facebook page. Luciano? Luciano? Jose Daniel?
Miami-Dade County.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of you. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, Fire May?
Yeah. Absolutely. To all my brother firefighters, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming and being here to share this night with the chief. And once again, on behalf of all the residents of the City of West Miami and us here, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I would like to go back to the order of the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And that will be item five.
Five. Item five, report of the city manager.
No written report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Item six.
Item six, report of the city attorney in reference to legislation about transient occupants and squatters. There are two reports by the city attorney.
First of all, in my presentation, I'd like to present to the manager a check for $10,000.
I'll take it.
That's one of the mitigations that the commission approved a few days ago. The manager will, of course, set forth the appropriate...
Release of lien.
Release of liens, and so that will be it. I was requested to, again, visit the white-green issue. This legislation, which I think that in its face, and of course, the intent, it's a beautiful, beautiful thing, that have been challenged unfortunately because of different interests throughout the state of Florida, specifically one that was filed by the Florida Bankers' Association, and I explain why. The case came down, decided by the Supreme Court on October 15th, 2015. They have, the Florida Bankers' Association have 10 days in which to file a notice of rehearing. But basically, it stands for the proposition that, and I'll read a little portion because I think that it's good for the record. It's who gets what when, and I'm going to read two cases that address the issue in particularity. And one is Gailey versus Robertson that was decided in 1929, holding that the lien of the property that was a result of a special assessment took priority over pre-existing mortgage and regating the claim that resulted in a constitutional impairment of vested right. In other words, a mortgage company comes to an individual and say, "You need some money to buy a house, and I'm going to lend you the money to buy the house." Let's say this is $100,000. The house probably is worth a little bit more, $140,000, $150,000. The lender is lending money to you on the proposition that, number one, they have examined the title; number two, that they think that they have a proprietary interest before and above anybody else; and number three, that you're going to fulfill the payment in the future. What happens with this particular statute that was decided a few days ago, and that will probably will go on appeal again, is that the legislature that addresses the PACE program was composed of several factors. Number one, it authorizes the admission of bonds. Number two, it authorizes cities to enter into an interlocal agreement. For the life of me, I did not understand why, if someone wants to borrow money, why they would need a municipality in order to get the loan. And after reading many cases, I realized that a case named South Sora County versus Andrew that was decided in 1991, the court found that the county attempt to assess a lien created by an ordinance was superior in right to a prior recorded mortgage was unconstitutional. In other words, you have two cases. One, that a special assessment district is formed; and the other one, that stands for the proposition that a subsequent lien cannot be superior to the mortgage. What happens is that what the legislature has authorized is for the city to have the burden and responsibility to create a special assessment and to form, by authorizing that special assessment, the ability or the mechanism for an individual to borrow money, but that they will pay on the authorization of that particular city to the tax collector's office on a monthly basis or a yearly basis whatever they owe. That has many issues that need yet to be decided. One of the issues is this: who has the ability to perform the work at the particular home? Well, several cities got together, and they formed a special assessment district, and they, amongst themselves, chose particular contractors or third-party entities that would sort of administer that program. The special assessment district or the district would have the right and opportunity to get themselves together and exercise a number of rights, among which was to purchase property, to get loans, to administer, et cetera. The only problem is that pursuant to an interlocal agreement that was presented to us, and I'll read it to you, voting rights, that will be something that they are asking us to write, to approve. The parties, that will be the municipality, the City of West Miami, agreed that municipality shall be a non-voting member of the green corridor for the term of the interlocal agreement. Now, my counsel is this: if you do not have a right to voice or to vote in a meeting where the decision is going to be made as to borrow money, somebody has to be responsible, I certainly would not recommend this particular type of instrument to be executed. I don't know whether I mentioned this before, but there's so many... I spoke to Marco Sainz de la Pena, which is a tax collector, and I spoke to the tax assessor's office, and they both gave me... I requested a number, a general number, and see what was the percentage of people that had taken advantage of this law that was passed three years ago. And the answer is, out of 750,000 units of property in Miami-Dade County, only 400 had taken advantage of this issue. I checked out with several cities, including the county. The county has no idea how to proceed with this. So I'm working with the county and see whether we can get some sort of medium term that people could take advantage without having the city the burden or having someone not paying their program, their loan, and the way that they will collect it is not through a foreclosure mechanism, but they will go out and sell the tax lien at the public auction. So they have bypassed the system, and in order to assess their interest superior to mortgages, they will sell the tax liens on the public property. So at this point, number one, there still exists the possibility of an appeal for the order that came out October 15th, and number two, unless this issue changes, and we get an opportunity to voice our opinion and to be sure that whatever loans the entity acquires, that we have a say whether or not we want to participate. So that will be the end of my presentation. If you have any other questions, I have plenty of cases in here that I could share with you.
Okay. Any questions? Okay.
I just have a comment. Mr. Attorney, thank you. And I know we left you with an order to research, and I appreciate all the work you've done in bringing us back the report. I don't know if the city manager had something on it as well?
Yes, and in discussions over the last few days to prepare for this item with the city attorney and all the research that he's conducted on the issue, I believe that the city would financially open itself up to some sort of liability, and there's a great question mark there, obviously, because of our lack of, call it, participation in the voting process of what the corridor decides or those voting members that form part of that corridor. And I believe it opens up the city to financial unknown, and also because of the pending cases that Mr. Villalobos says that can be appealed because they're within the window of time that can be appealed, I think we need to have a sense of some kind of assurance that the issue will not be appealed before we even think about participating, because that would also put us legally in a disadvantageous position. While the program seems very interesting and as an interesting alternative for residents that want to do certain improvements, I also think that it should be noted that residents should at least know that there are financial implications. Even if the city were to embrace the program at some point, it may not result in a beneficial situation because there are prepayment penalty clauses. If an owner decides to sell the property, the debt stays with the property, and it may tie the hands of a particular owner who's participating in the program, and that owner may lose a sale if they're in the disposition to sell their homes. So for more reasons than one, and I have to say, the legal unknown financial issues that remain somewhat unclear, I would encourage the commission to defer from voting on this item until we are in a more solid position. And I'm not suggesting in any way, shape, or form to take it off the table completely or not to reconsider it at a future time, but I don't believe that this municipality is ready to embrace this program just yet. And that would be what I would like to add, based on our numerous conversations between my office and the city attorney.
The second item that I was supposed to report in is the issue with the squatters. We have been having issues with the squatters throughout Miami-Dade County. Recently, there was a statute that was passed and adopted on July 1st, 2015, and creating Chapter 82.245 that peripherically addresses the issue of unauthorized people living in homes. This is not in the case of squatters. This is simply someone that you go ahead and invite into your home, let's say, a cousin, a mother, a father, a son, or something, and at some point, you simply don't want them to be there. And there's a methodology that was created by House Bill Number 305 that addresses that possibility via a personal sworn affidavit signed by the owner. Now, the issue with squatter is that there are several cities, as a matter of fact, nationwide, there's an issue with people coming out into property unauthorized and simply stay there. They have been created at some point, some squatter rights, and they say that under adverse possession, if you stay open, notorious during the period of seven years at a property and pay taxes on it, that you become the owner of the property. Now lately, we have been having the phenomenon, especially of people that come and they go out to supermarket, they see a sign, "Home for Sale," they call that number, a gentleman comes or a lady, and sign a contract, and they say, "Here are the keys," and they enter the keys, and the person that signed the lease is not even the owner. It's just simply a person that committed fraud, criminal fraud, that is penalized by Florida statute, and the person that is there might believe that they have a legal right to stay, and when the rightful owner comes, they find someone there. What do you do about it? There's three cities that I have found that has legislation or ordinances that addresses that issue that, in my opinion, they would not stand challenged in the court either challenged. And basically, it goes out like this, when a... Specifically, in the City of Coral Gables. I talked to the city attorney in the City of Coral Gables, and one of the city attorneys in the City of Coral Gables, and they have had three cases that they have attempted to use this methodology. Simply, an anonymous call comes and they say, "I believe that there's a squatter in such and such an address." A police officer is called, they go and knock at the door, somebody opens the door, and the police officer asks, "What are you doing here?" And the person is supposed to say, "Well, I live here." They produce a paper, do not produce a paper, but the police officer assumes the determination that that person is a potential squatter, and they take him to an administrative hearing, very much like the red light cameras. A person appointed by the city commission or by the city manager sits as a hearing officer, and he hears whether or not that person might or might not be a squatter, and then orders eviction, and then supposedly, eventually, the police comes out and evict that person. Now, the only problem with that is that there is a law that supersedes any ordinance in any city in the state of Florida or county in the state of Florida that stands for the proposition that the unique jurisdiction of a property right remains on the courts. In other words, no police officer has any authority, in my opinion and the opinion of that statute, to go anywhere, and no one can give authority to any board or to any hearing officer to evict someone without a court order and without a writ of possession. So I recommend it to the administration, of course, action in these things, but certainly, number one, the city by itself does not have any proprietary interest in order to come and commence an eviction notice or action. It has to be the owner that has to go to court and get, number one, either file an eviction action or an emergency possession. And actually, after the court issues a writ of possession, is when the court, through the county sheriff's department, has the authority to come and evict everybody and put the furniture outside. So that's how it stands at this point. Legally, there's not much that we could do but follow state law. And the state law stands for the proposition that the court is the only jurisdictional body that has authority to conduct an eviction, even if there is a squatter. Now, there is a case that went out, all the way out to the 11th Circuit in Atlanta. It's a federal case whereby the city had certain actions forcing an admitted squatter out of the property, and because the city did not give sufficient notice, the squatter went out to court, federal court, under the Fourth and Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution, and filed a due process action, and the court found that not only the city mayor, but the commissioners and the manager were personally responsible for damages, compensatory and nominal damages. So self-help, of course, is not the other issue, so if you have any questions, I'd be very happy to answer.
Okay. Any questions for the city attorney? Very well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
action or an emergency possession. And actually, after the court issues a writ of possession, is when the court, through the county sheriff's department, has the authority to come and evict everybody and put the furniture outside. So that's how it stands at this point. Legally, there's not much that we could do but follow state law. And the state law stands for the proposition that the court is the only jurisdictional body that has authority to conduct an eviction, even if there's a squatter. Now, there is a case that went out, all the way out to the Eleventh Circuit in Atlanta. It's a federal case whereby the city had certain actions forcing an admitted squatter out of the property. And because the city did not give sufficient notice, the squatter went out to court, federal court, under the Fourth and Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution and filed a due process action. And the court found that not only the city mayor, but the commissioners and the manager were personally responsible for damages, compensatory and nominal damages. So self-help, of course, is not the other issue. So if you have any questions, I'd be very happy to answer.
Okay. Any questions for the city attorney?
Very well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, if I may. In the last meeting that I presided on your behalf, we did have some contention about the issue that the attorney brought up about squatters. So I sort of asked him, I asked him and the city, our city manager, to look into, you know, the law and to see if there's anything that we can do to get some relief from these types of situations that affect our residents. And on Tuesday, I believe, Tuesday, I met with the attorney, with the city manager, our police chief, and our captain, and we spent about three hours.
And your chief code enforcement officer?
And Mr. Penna, I'm sorry, and Mr. Penna. And every single decision made by the courts and every single statute was explained to me and I read it word for word and I came to one conclusion that we, as a city, are doing, you know, the ultimate that we can do as far as finding relief for the residents in these types of situations. If we do otherwise, we would be putting the city in a position of liability. And not just the city, but us.
Yeah.
As case law, as has been explained by the city attorney. So there's a due process and there's a lot of code enforcement violations that are in due process as we speak. And they do take time, they do take time. And, you know, Mr. Penna is on it. I want to take this time to commend our code enforcement board for volunteering and coming here. When is it, the first and second Tuesday? The first and second Tuesday of each month and sitting here and, you know, toiling with these issues because, you know, they're very important, they impact our quality of life. So I would like to commend them for doing that. And the only thing that I concluded that we can do to help, you know, the quality of life of our residents with these types of situations is to hire another code enforcement officer, either on a part-time basis or a full-time basis. I think that if we have two of them, we can much better tackle the situation, sometimes making contact and speaking to the property owner and telling them, "Look, you know, this is not allowed. Don't do it anymore because then you're going to be, you know, served with papers and so on and so forth." And once it's explained, then maybe the property owner will cease an decision from doing, you know, otherwise. So, you know, there's really only that. And there's something else that the attorney told me that he was going to look into in order to get some relief from our residents not getting stuck with sanitation or water usage bills. And he's going to do his due diligence and let us know if there's something that we can do that's going to help us.
To hold the owners accountable for their rental properties.
To hold the property owner accountable for sanitation and water usage and not the renter as it is now.
That's my third report.
Oh, I'm sorry. So anyways.
Well, we discussed at length and I have to thank the city clerk that reminded me about this too. Couple of years ago, I authorized a lien to be placed on an owner's property on water cost that had been incurred by a tenant. The owner of the property, a very kind attorney, I should say.
Leonard Elias.
I'm sorry?
Leonard Elias.
Leonard Elias from the city of Miami, from the county. Called me up and he says, "Mr. Villalobos, I want to advise you that you're wrong and I'm going to send you the case law whereby you have leased my property and I have an absolute right to go against you for slander or title." And he was right. He sent me a case of Miami Beach whereby Miami Beach did play hardball with an individual and they placed the property owner liable for water that had been used by a tenant and they got hit with punitive damages because they didn't recognize that the owner was right. In the state of Florida, it's forbidden to hold the owner responsible for any cost caused by the tenant. That's why we have, we require identification from whoever comes out and contract for the opening of the water service. However, that also had been abused because recently, we had issues like people coming with passports from Cuba and after certain people stayed in the United States, they simply go to Cuba and they stuck the city of West Miami with $800 worth of water service that we cannot charge the owner. So what is there to do? I'm exploring the possibility of having a system whereby we contract with the owner directly, owner, renter, the absentee owner, and not with the tenant. Therefore, we would bypass because technically, it would be illegal for us to cut the water of anybody, even if I have whatever issues in their home, unless they have failed to pay the proper water service. So I'm exploring the possibility of us having, developing a contract whereby the owner of the property is the one that is responsible for the opening of the water service and for the property owner to go ahead and contract with a tenant for a higher deposit or a higher security. Now, after the manager attempted to enforce my suggestion, you know, she was not enforcing an ordinance because you don't have one, of having a, I suggested to the manager to have a valid Florida license or identification in order to open the water. Well, there was a lady that came out with a British passport and she was the owner of the property and she wants to live in the property. Now, what is there to do? So then if you do and then if you don't. So there was no other choice by the manager to authorize the water contract to be opened in that particular case. But I think that there can be a few things that could be done. One could be raising the water deposit, but they open a contract with the city of West Miami. The other one is to, which is not real, we cannot do it, instead of collecting every three months, collecting every month, that would be so expensive that it simply could not be done. So we're trying to assist the city into some sort of relief so the city does not lose that. The other issue is this. We used to file liens for water consumption and we claim, used to claim at some time we prevailed whenever there was a foreclosure action. Now, it appears that foreclosure actions are superior, even though our code says that our is superior in dignity to any other lien. Well, the Supreme Court says that I was wrong and in fact, recently, we had that particular case and I had to bow and say to the opposing counsel, "You're right and I cannot do anything about it." So we're working very hard on this. So I want to assure you that the manager and the administration is doing a lot of things. I mean, we're talking, we're conversing three, four, five times a day.
That is correct and on weekends.
Saturdays and Sundays.
And the issue has become an issue because we have many rental properties in the city of West Miami. Ten, twelve, fifteen years ago, this was a non-issue. And our code stipulates or states that we had the right to go after a property owner to seek a remedy to collect the bill from them left by their tenants. And that code has a section that states that. Until this issue was challenged in court and that changed, obviously, the position that the city takes right now. To add to what Mr. Villalobos is advising you of, our office is conducting a research that has been assigned to staff that basically starts January 1st, 2015, through September 30th, 2015, that will tell us how many properties have turn-ons, which is basically alludes to the issue of rentals. I can tell you that, based on the paperwork that we see, I would not be surprised to see a good 30 or 33% of the city is comprised of rental property. So it's just very hard to keep up with the Joneses. So this said, I want to publicly reassure the mayor, the vice mayor, and every member of the city commission that the city goes to great lengths to protect the quality of life and to make sure that we collect what is due to the city for the service that the city provides. But at some point, we have found where we have exhausted all of our available and legal remedies and this is where we're at now, trying to find an alternative so that we don't have to find ourselves adjusting these bills and having to absorb these losses. Not only are they financial losses to the city, but they are losses in terms of quality of life to the surrounding neighbors. Because these are the very properties that wind up with code enforcement violations and squatters and all the other problems that we had, that are new to the city or fairly new to the city.
By the way, recently, I requested from the city manager a report as to how many squatters we had in the city of West Miami and I have been advised by Mr. Penna that we have one, right?
Known. One more. One more case.
We have a resident.
Do I?
We have a resident.
We have a resident.
Oh, a resident, okay.
That we have been made aware of.
That's a very good correction and I want to apologize to you and Mr. Penna because that's exactly what I've been preaching. An alleged squatter. Can, can you save it for the, oh, go ahead, go ahead. Make it quick, please.
My Elliott Asbell, 15345 Southwest 77th Court, Palmetto Bay, Florida. My reason for standing is I fully understand now, I as a landlord perhaps would do something that the city would not do. And that's my decision as a property owner, how to address certain circumstances. Certainly, I don't believe that the city has the right to knowingly put itself in jeopardy in terms of legal responsibility. But I do want to protect this commission. What has not been noted, and Ms. Mayor, you were not here, this issue really came to light because of residents, sometimes the same, sometimes different, for a long period of time occupying and led to code enforcement and led to neighbors for actually years, I think, was the testimony. Code enforcement did its job and, but you ran into, they didn't know who the owner was. At this point, I believe, at that particular property, we do know who the owner is. Having said that, I think this commissioner and the mayor, in terms of the expectations and the emotions of the citizens that were here, has an obligation to vis-à-vis your net, internet, or whatever, you need to definitively declare to these particular neighbors who you're aware of, it's on the record, they spoke on the record, that as was promised, the city attorney went by and did research. And unfortunately, in today's world, no matter how sympathetic you may be, until you have a willing owner to acknowledge responsibility and follow through, at the present time, you're dead in the water. And you need to do that for yourselves and future commissioners and mayors because the emotions of these people, they blame you. They blame you in terms of you haven't done enough, you haven't listened to us and so on and so forth. Well, you did listen, they were happy you listened, they walked away believing at that time that foreclosure was possible. We are now hearing that at this point, you cannot initiate foreclosure. So you have to acknowledge your lack of power, not your lack of responsibility and concern, but under present circumstances, your lack of power. You cannot permit the residents to mistakenly believe you're unwilling to act on their behalf for whatever reasons they imagine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney, anything else?
Mr. Asbell.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, yes.
I always like to look at the glass half-full. So I know this was a very bad situation that we went through, the residents went through, but on a good note, I like the fact that we are now going, we are being proactive and not reactive, that staff is looking at ways to get this under control for the future. So if nothing else, this brought us to the point of being proactive and not reactive. Yes, this problem's been around forever, but doubt the wheels are really turning and we're letting staff do what staff needs to do, address the situation and hopefully look for resolutions for future problems before they come up. So.
Anything else?
By the way, at this time, is there any item that I should take out of order or should I continue with the order of the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I have a resident, I don't know if she still wants to speak, she was here on Y-Green and I know she listened to the mayor's report, I mean, the city manager and the.
Okay.
Should she come up now or wait for the citizen's presentation? I yield to you as.
Well, that's why I asked to take it out of order, so how about if we jump to citizen presentation?
May we? Please. And you'll have to fill out a speaker's card on your way out? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vanessa Rero, I'm the one that emailed, I think, everybody up here, I'm pretty sure I emailed everybody. So.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Vanessa Rero, 6526 Southwest 20th Street. It's by the new apartment building right one block in. I didn't know a lot of the things that you had found and I tried to look up as much as I could and that was, okay, it makes sense, a lot of the things that you said and your concerns, but at the same time, the way it's being sold in the community to residents, you would think it's like, "Hey, come on down, let's do this." So that was my concern and that was my selling point on this. This is a way for me and my husband to upgrade and fix our house, to do the improvements that would make the property value go up. And, you know, I can sit here and tell you that I'm not one of these people that's going to abandon the house and just, you know, screw somebody in the long run with the bill. I want to make this house, this is my home, I want to make improvements, I want to fix what I can fix. And this program will let us do that. And it's a huge opportunity, understanding the risk, but I bought a house, there's a risk involved in buying a house. I bought a car, I just closed, bought the car two weeks ago, there's a huge risk in buying a car. So with everything, there's a risk, but it's basically a flip of a quarter. Do we want to take the risk and improve the houses and the community as a whole? Because this isn't just painting a house. Because I know, I also looked into, Rebecca Salsa has a beautification program through her commission and I looked into that and I don't qualify for that, my house property value is too high. So I'm trying to do things to increase my property value and this would be one of those things. So I just, even though there's cons to it, there's always pros.
Of course.
Because like you said, half empty, half full, it's worth something when you're looking into. And I know that, I was told that this was brought up about nine. into, and I know that, I was told that this was brought up about nine months ago, not to wait so long, try to work it out, figure something out a little sooner. And what I wanted to ask you guys is, are you guys waiting for the county to make a decision on this, to piggyback off of them, or is this something you guys would be considering? I'm not asking for a definite answer, but is this something you guys would do independently from the county? I don't know if I can ask questions.
I need to direct that question to the city attorney, because things come to the table over here, and we make a decision based on recommendations or the opposite, so...but in this case, I need to refer that question.
No, the issue is that we have to pass down resolution.
Okay.
Because we are a taxing authority, and this becomes whatever improvement dollars you seek to, from the program, or from the contractor, that basically becomes a lien against your property, obviously, until you pay that debt, or repay that debt, and because we are our own taxing authority, we have to, the commission would have to adopt an ordinance by embracing the program and/or resolution, I'm sorry, and it gets forwarded to the Office of Property Appraiser. So, and that becomes the document that will enable our residents to partake in that program.
Okay. And I also wanted to let you guys know, I don't know, the way I found out about it was Home Depot, the one on 8th Street near 27th, that they made an announcement, we have this program. So we did everything up until I went on the website, and there is a, for my property would be a $50 application fee, which I was ready to pay, but I called them first, and that's when they told me you guys weren't on board yet. So that's how the email started and everything. But since I wrote that email to you guys, I've gotten nine advertisements mailed to my house specifically talking about this program. I have an elderly couple that lives next to me that were very excited about it, and they were ready to start hiring people, and I go, relax, wait, no, and I explained what's going on. So this is getting out there, and then the fear would be, people are going to jump on it and then find out, oh my gosh, the city isn't doing it. So there's people coming up to my house, knocking on the door on Saturdays, hey, we have this program, which I know now, it's not something you guys are willing to do, so I'm holding back, obviously. But it's something, being with code enforcement here also, so you guys know, it is being publicized to the city, not just, you know, within the city, but countywide, to keep that in mind. So it'll go into code enforcement, it'll go into everything, because people are seeing it and want to jump on it, not knowing that you guys haven't adopted this yet.
Well, as a matter of information, the county has not adopted the...
Oh, yeah, I know, I know. Yeah, when I called the people that were overseeing this, they told me which municipalities have taken it on, which obviously doesn't pertain to me, but just the fact that there's still contractors promoting it, saying we can do this now.
There's other issues also that I, of course, it's so big that it took the Commissioner Rodriguez and I a couple of, good two hours to just discuss it. For instance, one of the things that is mentioned in the contract that were referred to in the agreement that we were shown, that referred to agreements that have been recorded but now present, which I had to go to court and get the copy of the recorded documents, is that, number one, we need insurance. So that would be an additional cost to the city. And others, such as that we would stand at a point of disadvantage, because we would not have an opportunity to vote on purchases or loans, and the administration were one that had been already pre-assigned, and the administrators were already named, and the attorneys were the ones that created the resolution of the ordinances. So, you know, we found, we were asked with something that I believe that it makes sense, but it's so convoluted that it made it almost impossible for an attorney to counsel you to go that route unless some relief is shown that the city is not going to be responsible. Because assuming that the third-party administrator falls down, well, assuming that, assuming that, I'm not implying anything, but assuming that somebody walks away with something, what happened to us? What happened to the citizen? What happened to the money that was acquired? So this is not very simple.
Or that the work was not done in the fashion that the code requires.
Or that the person is going to be foreclosed, not foreclosed, rather than the tax liens are going to be sold. They will not go out to the contractor or to the third-party administrator, they will come to you and claim from you something that you cannot get back. So the spirit is very nice, but the actual application is not quite that proper. And again, in a place that you have 750,000 units and only 400 have applied, and I actually participating, you know, there's something to tell right there, you know?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Herrera?
Yeah, Herrero.
Herrero.
Happens all the time.
Ms. Herrero, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
You know, personally, you know, I think the best way to go to fix up your property is to get a line of credit. Use your equity. Use the equity on your property. That, or get a loan through a regular banking institution.
Which is things that we've also...
That is, that is your best bet.
Yeah.
You know, you know, I know it sounds great, but there's always a catch. And, you know, as the attorney has tried to explain, you know, it's...
Tricky.
It's, you know, we're a very small city, and our ability to absorb liability is very limited. You know, we count the nickels and we count the dimes here. We have a six and a half million dollar budget. Other cities...
Five, five and a half.
I'm sorry, five and a half million dollars, and with that, we do everything. And, you know, other cities, you know, have the luxury of having different departments, having different attorneys, having, and having the ability to absorb a liability, an unforeseen liability. And, you know, sometimes they do that. They take the risk. In our situation, we can afford to take that risk. Because if we do something, if we do something against what he's advising us, and sure enough, you know, it becomes a legal conundrum, a legal issue, you know, we are insured through the League of Cities, and, you know, the League of Cities will represent us and, in layman's terms, go to bat for us. But if we do something that it's not legal, in other words, we are not covered 100 percent, as in this matter, he's telling us that we are not. You know, he's responsible, I'm responsible, she's responsible. Ultimately, this big company that makes this program sound so good, they're going to want to get paid somehow. And, you know, they're using us, they're using the municipality, they're using us as the means for that guarantee, for that guarantee, to collect. You know, so, and that's where he's advising us to, you know, to wait until, you know, the due process is resolved in the courts, and everything is determined, and, you know, but if that's the case, and it's going to be a benefit to the residents, and it's all legal, and there's no way that we can put this city in a position of liability, I'm sure the mayor's going to agree, I'm going to agree, and the rest of the commission's going to agree. But right now, you know, we're being told to hold off.
Which I completely understand, and I'm fine with, just my concern is that if things are happening outside of us, outside of you guys, that we not wait another nine months if something's happening sooner, just to stay on, be, just to bring it up a little bit more often, just to follow up.
Mr. Attorney, we're waiting for the court, right?
Well, not only that, but I even assume, Mr. Vice Mayor, even assuming that the court came out and said everything is okay, the way that it's implemented right now, I would advise you not to go with it. Because we have to, we would be approving a mechanism in which we sit at a board that we have no say. The board, that board could buy property, could get loans, could do whatever, and we would send one of you commissioners out to sit at that board, and you have no vote. In other words, you will be sitting there, and even if you're disagreeing with what they're doing, you have no vote. Can I make a suggestion, because we can go all along, and I'm sorry, with all due respect, the thing is, we have a very long agenda, we're right at the beginning, we're still in the report, but by the same token, you need to leave feeling that we're doing something about it.
No.
You need, we need to, and, no, 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 but I don't think so. I think we should, we need to take it a step further. I think what we need to do is direct the city attorney that, how about if you come back and report to us, and I'm not going to say the next meeting, we're talking about in, I will say, a month or two, so you can come back, and maybe some progress has come in, and let's leave it at that, you know?
Periodical updates.
Yeah, periodic updates. I will promise that I will do that, but I assure you that at the present time, I don't see in the near future, and I'm talking the near future, a couple of years, anything that is going to be done against it. Because, you see, Francis, a company had been already chosen, okay, on that district. We had no participation in choosing that company. The work that is performed is not the responsibility of the company or the third-party administrator. So I don't see the way that, just because someone else selected a company, that we had the opportunity of selection in an open procurement process. So we don't know who is good, and when you have, again, 400 units out of 750,000 units, and such a beautiful program, there's something wrong there. I understand, Mr. Attorney, but I, like I said, we have a very long agenda, and... Let me do it this way, I don't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Mayor. I promise you that I will give you, keep you abreast if I find anything that is going to happen. But as I say, the way that it's going and the way that the program is implemented at this point, I don't see any progress in the next couple of years. Okay.
So you'll just come back to us when you see something, when the program better itself? Something positive about the program that you come back to us and say, hey, this has changed, it looks better now?
Yes, ma'am.
Until then?
Yes, ma'am.
We'll leave it in the capable hands. Vanessa, thank you.
No, thank you guys very much.
Thank you for coming, and...
Thank you very much.
Okay.
You're always welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else on the report of the city attorney?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item, please.
Item seven, report of the city in the news, none this evening. Item eight, committee reports, report of the mayor.
I have no report.
Any other committee?
Okay, next item.
Item nine, citizen presentations. Ms. Herrero has...
Okay, next item.
...already. Item 10, under unfinished business. This is, these are items that were postponed at the October 7, 2015, City Commission meeting, and these are requests for deferred by Vice Mayor Blanes. These two items, if you want me to read it for the record, Mr. Mayor?
Whatever the procedure happens to be. Mr. Attorney?
It's deferred, so...
If they're going to refer, do we need to read it into the record?
That would have to be read on the record and deferred after...
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the reason I want it deferred is because, you know, we still need...
We need to read it into the record, I just asked the attorney. Let's do that first.
Let's read it into the record. Item 10A, request by Vice Mayor Blanes to purchase lightning detector to be installed at the West Miami Recreation Center. This is an emergency item by Vice Mayor Blanes. Item 10B, resolution of the mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Thor Guard Inc. for the purchase of a lighting detection system to be installed at the West Miami Recreation Center in the sum of blank, providing for set purchase to be funded from park impact fees, setting forth the need to purchase as an emergency item, providing for effective day, providing for severability, mayor and city commission.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I feel that we need to do a little bit more research as far as this equipment goes, because it has a very loud audible siren, and we need to make sure that we can silence it, and that we can operate in such a way where it will not interfere with the quality of life of our residents. I'm not sure if Mr. Penna has met with the representatives from the company. Have you, Mr. Penna?
Not yet.
Not yet. And that's why I want to postpone it, because there's a lot of questions that we need to ask them, pertinent questions, because there's been issues in other places where this system has been placed, as far as the noise. And we don't want to do something where we're going to have to, you know, take it back, we're having to make sure that...
Very prudent, so...
Motion to defer.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item.
Next item on the agenda would be item 11B, report by the city manager's office in reference to comprehensive plan update and timeline scheduled for completion and submittal of same to regulating agencies, request for an extension of contract between City of West Miami and FIU on the comprehensive plan update task, non-monetary, city manager, director of planning and zoning.
Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission. Mr. Penna met with Dr. Ned Murray with Florida International University, and Rafael Rosado, who's also assigned to the task of the comprehensive plan update for the City of West Miami, and we've made some progress along the way in the, in the report and the findings of those areas that we would come to you and recommend during the public hearing process of, regarding density projects and possible rezoning of land in the City of West Miami and future uses on some of our designations. So that being said, we're going to need a little bit more time to complete the comprehensive plan, and FIU is working diligently to assist us through that process. That being said, we need to extend the contract with a non-monetary extension through the end of December 30th, 2015, so that we can complete the public hearing process with the local planning agency, meaning this commission serving as the local planning agency for the City of West Miami. Mr. Penna, am I correct so far?
Yes, I have a correction. According to the letter from FIU, they are requesting a end date of January 31st, 2016.
And I stand corrected, January 31st, and I think that we spoke about this because of the issue of the holidays coming up. So there needs to be two meetings, and I don't know that we need to set those dates this evening, Mr. Penna. I think that we can bring it to the next commission meeting and calendar those, so that we can have ample time to advertise the public hearings, so that you can hear from the community, and we can hear a formal presentation to include the maps and the areas where transfer of development rights may come into play, and other issues pertaining to the comprehensive plan changes that we will be transmitting to other regulating agencies like Miami-Dade County Public Schools, the South Florida Regional Planning Council, South Florida Water Management District, and ultimately, the Department of Community Affairs to the State of Florida. So at the next meeting, you'll be asked to set aside two dates, and I would recommend we do one at the end of November, and maybe the last one early January 2016, so that we can complete the transmittal package. So that, we recommend that you extend that contract to the end of January.
Question, clarification. So this is to extend the contract, not necessarily to extend the timeline of delivering?
This extends the contract between the City of West Miami and FIU through the date of the transmittal to the regulation, regulating agencies. So yes, this takes us to the conclusion of the role of FIU with this project.
Okay. The reason I ask the question, because, as you know, anything that has to do with development and so on is cyclical, and in the past, we have lost the curve... is cyclical, and in the past, we have lost the curve because we're behind...
The eight ball.
The eight ball. And I want to make sure that we stay on track.
Yes.
As anything that has to do with a master plan for any future development. For the better of West Miami.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and what I will do is, we will try to prepare a memo for the commission summarizing the areas that Florida International University has looked at to include an economic development, uh, impact element on the comprehensive plan. We're going to prepare a memo, make it as easy as possible, have them blow up some maps and be, uh, so that you can schedule, uh, a public hearing date, your first one, where they will come and present their findings and their recommendation to the local planning agency, which is the City Commission, serving as the ultimate planning agency for the City of West Miami.
Okay, and I will suggest, if we can do it tonight, and I understand, because Mr. Penna said no, uh, but I think in the next commission meeting, we should be scheduling those, uh, those timelines, if possible. Okay?
Yes, we're going to be proposing some dates for you, because we have to meet advertisement requirements pursuant to statutes. And we would like to transmit the documentation to you, at least in its draft format, for your ready reference, so that we can sit with you individually and explain it to you before it goes to a public hearing. So, um, you will, you will be receiving a packet from our office with some recommendations.
Thank you. Any questions for the manager?
No.
Okay, can you read the resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 11C. Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the extension of time contract with Florida International University for the purpose of completing the city's master plan update as approved by resolution number 2015-09, providing for a non-monetary involved extension of time from October 1st, 2015, through January 31st, 2016, providing for new timelines, providing for effective date. Mayor and City Commission.
Motion.
Second.
Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis?
Yes.
Mayor Muñoz?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank the chief for the Cuban coffee. Now we can go till 2 o'clock like the good old days, uh, you know, we can continue. Next item, please.
Item 11D, request for resolution designating the 2015, 2016 legislative priorities for the City of West Miami. This is, this item was, uh, the request of Mayor Muñoz.
Okay. Uh, Madam Manager, I, I'm sorry, I was, uh...
D.
D, I was playing around with, uh, Cuban coffee here, and I lost my track.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I, um, I prepared a draft ordinance and I, I, I'm sorry, a draft resolution. Thank you, Anetti. Um, identifying the priorities as discussed in the meeting with our legislative consultant, the mayor and, and myself, on Monday of this week. Um, apparently, Anetti did not receive a copy of the draft. Uh, Mr. Gomez received it, Mayor, I forwarded to you as well.
Yes.
And Fausto gave us the green light to proceed with it. If my memory does not fail me, Mr. Mayor, the items that you requested, um, on behalf of the, this commission, was the recurring funds for the West Miami Community Center under the chairmanship of Commissioner Luciano Suarez, and a potential or a possibility of increasing the funding by $50,000 to see if we can find the dollars to provide a second meal to those seniors that have the high nutrition risk, uh, which would be an evening meal. Um, that would be the first request. The second request, Mr. Gomez basically talked to us a little bit about what we should expect in this upcoming legislative session and how the climate in Tallahassee, the landscape of the political climate in, in Tallahassee, what we should expect. Based on that, he said $500,000 for the potable water system for repairs would be an amount that they would seriously look at. Anything more than that would probably be shelved and not even, uh, not even looked at with a, a sense of, of, of funding. So, uh, that said, uh, the mayor is, um, is following that recommendation and would like to submit to you to approve, uh, a $500,000 water, potable water funding application. I am in receipt of the application. Uh, I have forwarded it to Mr. Penna and our city engineers, so that they can look at it. We can sit down, meet next week, and talk about the completion of that application. We also express support to the applications under the, um, Florida, the FERDA program, the two applications that we have pending, filed by Mr. Ruano, approved by this commission, for the playground equipment at the West Miami Recreation Center and the shaded structure over the basketball courts. They're known as one large project and one small project. One requires a match from impact fees, and one does not require a match. Um, those projects are also inclusive of that resolution, and again, this is under the leadership of Vice Mayor Juan Blanis, um, who's been working diligently with Parks and Recreation and our office in, in an attempt to, to secure the funding for those, uh, programs, so that we can improve our facilities at the West Miami Recreation Center. Mr. Mayor, I believe that, that that concludes the, uh, request for funding, with the exception of obviously, uh, sending a strong message to the state not to continue reducing our, our revenues. Uh, there is legislation in the pipeline that the city, uh, under the mayor's proposal, would, would not be friendly to, which is any improvements made by our cable company, which is our local cable company here is Comcast. Um, they are seeking relief to have municipalities have to pay for any, um, fiber optic cable improvements, where they would have to basically tear up sections of our public right-of-ways. And the Comcast is seeking financial relief from the city or a partnership, where the city is responsible for the right-of-way restoration. The mayor's position during our meeting with Mr. Gomez was, the city should not incur any expenses, specifically, it's because we're dealing with the unknown. We don't know if and when Comcast needs to come in and provide, um, and provide upgrades to their system or their cable system, and what type of expense the city should be planning for, so there's not a, an idea of what we would have to budget for that. And so the mayor's position was, we will object to it, and we will object to it through the resolution mechanism.
By the way, and I'm sorry that I interrupted you.
Yes, sir.
In lemon terms, they will come in, dig up a hole, install a cable, replace a cable, whatever, and leave it open for us to cover it, so...
And that's a liability, too.
That's, that's their proposition, and that's what they're seeking.
And that's, they're seeking that from, from, uh, for, from the, uh, from the House, and... The House has already presented a bill, and, uh, they're waiting for a companion bill from the Senate right now, so that they can move it forward during committee hearings.
So I'll encourage everybody to, um...
AT&amp;T?
Uh, this would be Comcast, and this would be your local cable companies.
I'm saying AT&amp;T.
So...
You know, there's always the option of going with AT&amp;T.
Right.
Maybe they won't, uh, want to do that.
So this is something that will affect not only the City of West Miami, the numerous communities that have franchise agreements with cable companies to, um, to basically provide a service to the residents. Um, obviously, the mayor's, uh, mayor expressed support towards preserving our telecommunications distribution. We also spoke to Mr. Fausto Gomez about how to report increase in population in the City of West Miami, and we learned that that is done through the census, and obviously, that will provide, um, the, the mechanism to have the state take a look at our revenues and what should come to us based on our per capita distribution, which is the way our money from Tallahassee is tendered over to the city. So those are the items that were discussed during the meeting, and that is the content of the resolution. And I'm sorry, Anetti didn't get it. I know the mayor got it and Fausto, so it may have gone to your spam file. We'll take a look at it tomorrow, Mr. Mayor, and if the commission wishes to adopt these measures this evening, then we will, uh, proceed to have you sign the resolution.
Okay.
I, I don't know that I left anything out, please refresh my recollection.
No, no, you, you, every, every single point. Any questions for the manager, any instruction?
Uh, we need a motion, sir.
Yeah, we need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Uh, what's the resolutions read?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, please.
Item 11E, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, establishing the 2015-16 legislative, legislative priorities and funding request to the State of Florida, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Mayor and City Commission.
Okay, I need a motion, again, I'm sorry.
Motion by Commissioner Suarez.
Who made the motion?
Commissioner Suarez.
Who seconded?
I seconded.
Okay.
Seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez.
Okay, can you call the vote?
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis?
Yes.
Mayor Muñoz?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item?
Item 11F, request to amend resolution 2015-08 in reference to credit line application for the public works building to increase the city's financial commitment to the public works expansion project by city manager.
Uh, can you read the resolution as well, please?
First one, Article, uh, three, uh, Session 306, uh, Rant 2, you need four to vote.
Thank you. Can you read the resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11G, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami amending resolution 2015-08, authorizing the city manager to borrow $600,000 from Total Bank for the construction of the public works, works facility by increasing the city contribution from the, from the city for this project by an amount of $25,000 from the 2014-15 city budget, for a total city project pledge in the sum of $175,000, providing for set funds to come from reserve designated funds, providing for effective date, providing for severability. Mayor and City Commission.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, as, as briefly as possible, uh, give you an update. We have met with Total Bank, the city's in the process of executing the credit line, uh, loan that you authorized under the previous resolution, as, as, as read by your city clerk, uh, for an amount of $600,000 for the construction of the public works building and the adjacent lot, so that we can complete the municipal parking lot. That said, the city is also putting forth monies towards the project. We have in-construction costs for the building, $703,000 that was approved to SEC, the general contractor that was, that was awarded the bid. SEC. That being said, there is other work to be done, and the city is putting a match from its designated reserves. And the bank wants to see a trail of all the dollars that we have committed towards the building, uh, to include the design concept that was, uh, tendered by the, um, engineers, the design-build concept that was approved by this commission. So, the resolution, uh, in and of itself contains the amendments that incorporates the first payment that would have been made during last fiscal year that ended September 30th for an amount of $25,000, which is contemplated in your budget. So what we're doing it is, we are accruing it, and we're designating it towards the project at the closure of September 30th. In addition to that, we are also identifying a $35,000 approved expense to TY Lynn, who was responsible for the design-build concept for the building and the project, um, that, that is soon to, to be under construction. So they wanted a resolution that would track each and every dollar that will be earmarked towards the project for a total match from the city of $175,000.
Mayor, I have a question.
Uh, hold on, Ms. Aguilar, do you finish?
That's pretty much in a nutshell what the change is in the resolution.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
My question is, Isolanda, this money was already allocated, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, I make a motion.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, uh, Commissioner Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis?
Yes, yes.
Mayor Muñoz?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and now, we will be meeting with the bank next Tuesday morning to pursue the, um, letter of interest and move closer to the, uh, closing of this credit line.
Okay. Next item, please.
Item 11H, report by the Office of the Director of Public Works in reference to residential parking and the public right-of-way complaints in the west side of the city, and recommendation to install signage, signage...
Signage.
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 That, and enforcement, the, uh, yes.
Uh, I still have some Cuban coffee over here.
I need a copy, yeah.
I have a clear copy.
You have it, thank you. Director of Public Works.
Mr. Penna?
You finished?
Signage.
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 Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
Basically, uh, we've had this problem all throughout the perimeter of the city, and that is the, some, uh, of the commercial areas, uh, lack of parking bleeds into the neighborhoods. And now with the, not with the new building, but with a new commercial building on the west side of 67th Avenue, we have the same problem occurring around Southwest 22nd Street. So it was, uh, raised by the residents there that, uh, people were just parking their vehicles to go to work. They leave them there, and they cross the street and take their work truck and go to work. So, uh, most cities have adopted a parking program, which we spoke about, probably about a year ago, uh, for the 57th Avenue side. And, um, it just, we tabled it at that point, because the business that was creating the problem went out of business. Uh, but it's not something bad to have. Uh, it's, it's, uh, basically a decal system where we identified all the vehicles that live in the City of West Miami, and we provide signage, and we advise everybody in the area that that area there is reserved for residential parking, not commercial parking. And that has an enforcement tool to it for citing people that park in the area without, uh, a, a permit, basically. Uh, this is something that's been done in other cities, like Coral Gables and City of Miami, and it's helped their, their neighborhoods. So it's something that I believe the, the residents that live near the perimeters of the city want. Uh, but, uh, there's, uh, ordinances and, um, a procedure in the ordinance for adopting such a plan, where the majority of the neighborhood would have to be in favor of that type of signage policy.
Okay.
Uh, or not. We're not going to be discussing that.
Right, we're not going to discuss it, I, I, I just want to get informed. Uh, Chief, uh, do you want to add anything to it? Not at this time, or...
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, not much. I understand it's first reading, but we did have our little meeting, um, a few days ago and discussed it, and appears to be the, the best way to go right now.
Thank you. Okay, can you read the, uh, resolution, please?
Actually, it's a first reading.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the first reading.
It's a first reading of an ordinance, a long ordinance. Uh, item 11I, first reading, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to designate those residential areas within the City of West Miami as residential parking only, establishing that the designated areas shall be any area, one block from any commercial area establishment within the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to place a signage of residential parking only on such designated areas, creating a residential parking zone, creating a residential and visitor permit, the called hanged, top parking program, establishing the enforcement of the residential parking only program, including the issuance of citations for non-compliance, authorizing City of West Miami police officers to issue such citations for non-compliance of the residential parking only signage, establishing fine for violation of this ordinance, providing for... codification, providing for an effective date by Mayor and City Commission.
Okay. Need a motion?
This is the first reading.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, can, uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Next item?
And, and Mr. Mayor and members of the City Commission, the second reading for this ordinance will be, uh, read on, on November 18th because for the meeting of November 4th, we don't have time to advertise. So November 18th, 2015, City Commission Meeting, 7:30.
Public hearing on the item?
Public hearing, yes. Public hearing.
Um...
Yes.
11J?
11J, Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager the expenditure of $11,000, $11,250 in connection with the repairs of sewage pump for lift station number four located on Southwest 62nd Avenue and 18th Street payable to Pump Tech, Inc., providing for effective date by Mayor and City Commission.
Um, Mr. Penna?
Yes, let's yield to Mr. Penn on this item, please.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this is one of the sewage pumps at that lift station that is in need of complete overhaul. Uh, the last time it was overhauled was over seven years ago and, uh, it is time to overhaul it. Uh, it has wear and tear to something that works continuously and that is the estimate from the vendor that we use for overhauling that type of pump.
Okay. Motion.
Second.
Uh, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
How do you vote? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Muñoz?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Next item?
Item 11K, Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager the expenditure of a cap of $12,000 in connection with sidewalk repairs to the sidewalk in front of City Hall by the community center and other sidewalk areas that are raised payable to, uh, the estimate was received from Mr. Penna because we left it blank.
Uh... It was a cap of, uh, $12,000, Mr. Penna?
WL Trucking and Engineering.
WL Trucking and Engineering, Inc., providing for effective date by Mayor and City Commission.
Mr. Penna?
Mr. Mayor, um, and Commissioners, this is not just for sidewalk repair. This is for a little group of areas that we need to address, one of them being the, the island that we wanna create around the stop sign on 14th Street, the, on Silvania, the council that gets keep not, uh, being knocked down. Well, that, that's part of the curbing work that has to be done. And then in the process of getting that estimate, noticed that the Royal Palms here in front of City Hall have uprooted the sidewalk to, in front of the community center to a trip hazard. And with all the constant traffic we have there, we've included to tear all that out again, put some, uh, root vapor barrier for the, for the palm trees and then, uh, place the sidewalk back in once it's done. And also, uh, additional sidewalks that are in very, in various areas that need to be repaired. Uh, it's a small little drop that we're throwing into what we need for repairs of sidewalks. Uh, anybody that walks the city has seen that we have plenty of need, but we'll be addressing that probably next year.
How are we, I'm sorry, how are we determining which ones we're doing first, the, the worst ones? I mean, how are we going about?
No, uh, what we're doing is, uh, if we have other work in the area that is requiring, uh, curbing or sewer work or anything like that because of a sewer extension or a lateral extension or repair of fire or hydrant, stuff like that, that's when we go ahead and put it in the sidewalk.
I have a question.
Yes.
But the main, the main problem we have here in front of the community center, right?
We have a section.
Yeah, a section with the roots from trees.
Right.
I make a motion.
Okay, uh, before, well, yeah, let's make a motion, then I have a comment. Uh, need a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Muñoz?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. And, and in reference to the same item, this is something that, um, my manager, I don't know how we, but we need to pursue dollars, uh, allocate money for this 'cause, uh, this has been going on for a while and I, I think this is something that we really need to pay attention, uh, because if you don't, you, you don't stay on top of us, you know, Mr. Penna, you know, it gets worse and worse and, uh, we need to pay attention to it 'cause I, um, when you walk around the city, you see a lot of areas with this and this could be, um, no, let's leave it at that. We need to take care of it.
Mr. Mayor, um, I'd like to, for the record, to reflect that you did speak to me during the budget process on this and unfortunately, we just didn't have the money to allocate so that we can start making the necessary sidewalk repairs that we need to address these very issues that are being, uh, brought this evening for your consideration. So, um, we will take a very serious look at this item for next year's budget and try to start allocating money for an aggressive root pruning program and a sidewalk repair replacement program.
Thank you. Next item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 11L, Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, supporting adequate funding of the low-income home energy assistance program. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Suarez.
Commissioner Suarez.
All right, well, let me, uh, explain you. Uh, this, uh, this resolution has been sponsored from many, uh, cities in South Florida. This is a program, it's an entity, L I H E P. You can see, read there, Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program. This program works with FPL. It's a federal money that comes from the Congress for the low-income person that they cannot pay most of the bills, especially the energy. So sometime when they qualify, FPL give a 50% credit or 40% credit or 60, all depends the qualification they have in the income. So this program, as you see in the, in the samples that you have there, in, in 2010, the, the program was funded, funded by 5.1 billions. Now in 2015, it's 3.4 billions. So this resolution, the cities are asking and the, this resolution has been sent into the Congress asking for increased funding for this program, the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program. And it's a program that works with FPL. It has been, um, explained by many cities and I, I check with FPL too, that it's a serious program, it works very well. So I ask you for, um, support this resolution.
Okay, I, I think it's a great thing. Uh, need a motion on this item?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Muñoz?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item and, uh, also can you read the resolution as well?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, item 11M, Report by Director of Public Works and Request for Resolution in reference to engine repairs to community centers jitney bus by Director of Public Works. Item 11N, Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager the expenditure of $13,226 and zero cents in connection with the needed repairs to community centers jitney bus payable to Palmetto Ford Truck Sales, providing for a two-year warranty for the complete engine and providing for effective date by Mayor and City Commission.
I, I hope next meeting you bring some good news, right?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. You're the bearer of bad news. Usually. As you know, the, the, the old jitney bus that we have for the hour loop, we transferred it 'cause it was newer to the community center to replace that older bus. However, it's a diesel engine and even though the bus only has 57,000 miles, uh, one of the valves dropped in the engine and you don't notice it, it's just a, a misfire for a while, but by the time it was taken apart, there was extensive damage in the, in the motor, uh, to the $213,000. To repair that motor. There's a mix-up here in this, the way the resolution was written.
Right.
The $13,226 is to repair the existing motor and the only thing that gets warranted is whatever they replace. The rest of the motor could blow another valve tomorrow or something else could happen and it's not covered. My recommendation was to go with the higher alternative, the $19,000 and put a brand-new engine in it because the bus warrants it. Those are expensive buses, they're $85,000 as you saw when we bought the other one. And that will come with a two-year warranty.
Wow.
Bumper-to-bumper on that motor. So, uh, my recommendation is going with the $19,000, not the $13,000.
A cap of $20,000.
Correct. The, the $13,000 is just to repair what we have now with no warranties on what happens in the future.
I, I have a question, maybe?
Yes, and I have one for the manager.
Manager, uh, Yolanda, the money for this comes from the half-cent, right?
No.
No.
This is the community center bus.
This is community center bus. This has to come from general funds, reserve designated.
I thought it was from the half-cent for the...
No, we transferred it, once, once we bought the new one, we transferred the old one from the half-cent to the community center. At that fund, the funding for that bus comes out of the general fund.
Right.
When we bought it, we, we bought it with the half-cent money, right?
When we first purchased the new, yes.
The problem is that you don't have enough money in your community center reserves to take care of the $20,000 ticket item that Mr. Penn is recommending to repair with a warranty.
I know this is recommending the unlimited warranty for two years.
Two years.
It's a difference of, um, uh...
It's a difference of a couple of years. They're gonna take out that engine completely and put a new engine.
Yeah, 13 to 19, 6,000.
What exactly this bus is for? Just for the seniors?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry, the bus, this, what is the bus used for at this time?
That is the bus that picks up the seniors to bring them to the lunch program and the activities here at the community center.
And if they go on field trips, it's the same bus?
Correct.
This is a 2006 bus?
Correct.
And it has 80,000 miles on it?
No, no, 57.
I'm sorry?
57,000.
57, I stand corrected. 57,000 miles, so it's...
Do we have the money allocated for this and the...
We would have to take it from reserves, uh, from a general fund.
From a general fund, no, the communities?
No, there's not enough in reserves in the community center to address this.
And we take part of the community, part of the general fund?
I would recommend against it because we have...
You recommend take for the general fund?
Yes, yes. I think that at the end of September 30th and we have not closed a year yet, therefore I'm not in a position to give you an idea of where we are going to be at, but we should have adequate reserves to address this in the general fund.
Well, anyway, we have to fix it. We have to repair that. Well, let me tell you, according with the senior citizens that they has been working all their lives and they are there and this bus is using for those senior citizens, I recommend the 19,000 because it's better service for them to be sure that the bus will be ready, raining, whatever, it's not with problems for two unlimited years. So I recommend the 19, they deserve it. How the table decide on it.
So that's a motion?
I make a motion for the 19,000.
Okay, so you second the motion?
Yeah.
Second, second.
Okay. Uh, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, approving the resolution with the amendment, uh, with the, to go with the Uh, motion by Commissioner Blanca, second by Commissioner Suarez, Commissioner Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Muñoz?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Go to the order.
Chief, um, if I may, Mr. Mayor, so that the chief can address you on pumpkin patrols.
Okay.
Just briefly, since you've given all the money to Penn, I can't ask for anymore.
No, no more.
Pumpkin patrols, uh, for Halloween, it's been done, it's all set up, it's being done by reserve officers, so it's not costing us any money. Um, we're gonna be having plenty of candy to hang out to the kids and, and make sure that the streets are safe for everyone on Halloween.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Can we hand out coffee and donuts to the parents and grandparents?[1782.15]